Okay. Well, um, make a motion that we go into executive session according to Idaho code, Section 74 dash 206.
Second.
Oh, um, on paper?
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion carries to executive session.
She's in the last.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do I need all this discussion?
Well, we're out of executive order, or executive session. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All of you, ver mercy.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to celebrations. The strong relationships, the Moody. Let's see who's gonna do that.
Uh, you.
You.
Okay.
So, this is a brief but very important recognition for the Kuna School District. We get a gold star because we got a double A rating for Moody for our current rating, which means low risk of default. So, congratulations. This, this right here is the official front page of that issue from Moody. And the double A rating's in the top left, which you can't see very well, but it's there. So, great job, Kuna School District.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, school board appreciation month.
Yes, I would just like to say thank you to our school board for all that you do, for your support and for, you know, your wisdom and helping us make decisions and just for being willing to come in, visit with us, go and visit schools. And I know you have a hard job. We know you have a hard job because you get lots of emails and questions and everything like that, and you handle it well. But, like I said even before, is I really do appreciate the opportunity to get to work with, with all of you because you do a great job. And thank you for being willing to serve for the pay that you get. But no, truly, we really do appreciate all that you do. And thank you for all your long hours that you put in with us and for your support. It means a lot.
Do you still have fun once a month, send a different trustee away?
Yes.
I keep sending this month.
I'd like January.
Okay, but I get to go too.
Every month you get to go.
Superintendent Beckendall, can you help us with the update on the kindergarten open house?
Yeah, we, again, and Kevin can help chip in here too because...
Mrs. Clements?
Oh, Mrs. Clements too, yes. And Melissa probably too, I don't know if you were there or not. But we did our kindergarten open house in May because we had to make some changes for the, from April to May because of working on that boundary change. But it was success. It went well. All of our schools, five of our schools that have the kinder, said it went well. They have good turnout and they prepared well. They had fun stuff happening. Did you add anything shade to that or?
I think the majority of us had more kindergarten students come to open house this year than we've seen in several years past. And lots of positive comments, even after the boundary changes, there was a lot of positivity and excitement for the new year.
Kevin, can you think of that?
No, that's what I heard from principals.
That's what we heard too, from a neighbor. Yeah, so it went well.
I wanna do that PLC, yeah, conference update.
Yeah, trustees, there's a photo here. Last Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, our district sent 145 participants to the high impact teams training with the, about our professional learning community. That's been our focus. It's part of our strategic plan and the student learning pillar. It's our process for how we do things to make sure that we're providing quality instruction every day in every classroom. Part of our vision statement. So, this was an awesome opportunity because as we focused on this all year long, our goal has been to get as many people as possible to go to one of the trainings. And so, we knew that they were, this is the same kind of a training that we took our administrative team to last year when we went to Las Vegas with our grant money. And for this year, we used some of that, the part of that grant money was left over and then our budget that we had put aside for professional development. And then buildings also paid to send additional people because it was that important for them to have their whole teams there. But, so this was that continuation of that work and it was just a great experience. The comments that I kept hearing from, I was rotating around at different tables and like almost every table I went to, somebody says, "Thank you so much, this is the most valuable training we've been to." And for us, it was a great opportunity because when they came to Boise, we don't have to pay airfare and lodging. So, it saved us a lot of money and that's why we were able to send so many people. So, to make a big change in a district and our culture and our practice, to send that many people is huge. So, it was a great opportunity for us to go. We've got a lot of momentum right now and we wanna keep that going. So, thank you for supporting us with that strategic plan and student pillar, yes?
I just wondered what high impact means.
So, the focus of this was basically on how we do, the PLC has four basic questions. And the first one is what do we want our students to learn and know? And then the second one is how will we help them learn? And that's really what this focused on. It doesn't go beyond that much into the RTI or how we respond when kids don't know. So, it's really just helping us get our processes in place, how we work as teams, how we assess the learning and how we use that assessment information. So, that's been our, our focus this year was all about what we want students to know. We've been working on getting our essential standard, we call them priority standards. The state calls them essential standards. So, we've been working on getting those all aligned, K-12, and then really knowing what that means. And then next year, our focus will really be on assessment. So, it's a, it's the work we need to do. It helps us, and this was really important at the conference. One of the main presenters said, because PLC, professional learning communities, and he asked us, what does the L stand for? And of course, everybody knows learning. But he said, who's learning? And professional learning community is really about the adult learning. It's about helping us to be better. Because if we're better, then student learning will also improve. So, that's the beauty of this. This is our professional development. It's just becoming who we are and how we operate, but it will make us better in the long run, so. And we were the shining star of the conference. Nobody had anywhere close to that number of people there, so.
And so, anyone who wanted to go could go? Anyone who signed up or how did that?
Well, we targeted, I targeted first with the district professional development funds and the grant money that was left, our leadership teams in every building. So, anyone on a leadership team that had not yet been to a training, we targeted them first because we want the leadership teams in each building. And then principals that pay for additional spots. And then principals that pay for additional spots, they targeted beyond that. So, like Shay and Rob, we both had teams or people on teams that hadn't yet been. So, they would now have whole teams that have been trained. So, it depended on the principal at that point, who else came. So, but our goal is at some point to have everybody get something. We, and our feedback to Solution Tree who does these trainings is come back to Boise, please. Because we can send more people.
Well, maybe with this attendance level?
That's what our hope, that's why I put that in my feedback and I talked to every one of the main people that were there and said, "Please come back, we've got a lot of people here, we'll do it again if you come back here." So, anyway, it was an awesome experience. I'm gonna sit up here if you're, because I'm next, if you want.
Okay, go ahead, capital plan update.
Oh, and now, and then your assessment.
Yeah, we can skip right over me. No.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, tonight I wanna give you, um, a look, we're just gonna look at data in two ways tonight. This is big picture and it's just about proficiency and our trends over the last three years. Uh, this data is not official yet, I don't, but it'll only change slightly as they, they apply the business rules. Sometimes they weed out some of the kids because they haven't been here long and those types of things. But for the most part, our data will stay the same. So, I just wanna show you big picture where we ended on, uh, on proficiency. But then we'll also look at the three-year trends because that lets you know, big picture at least, where we're going. So, this, and this is just the state mandated testing. So, um, this is the IRI, um, which of course is changing next year to a MIR. I just went to a training for that today. But in kindergarten, we ended with seventy-seven percent of our kids who reached the kindergarten proficiency, sixty-one in first grade, sixty-six in second, and seventy-two in third grade. I included these up here because I wanted you to get an idea of how we track throughout the whole year. Uh, so, and this is a good example of what I wanna show you. At the beginning of the year, this is where our score worked for our kids who were two or more grade levels below. And by the end of the year, you can see that same group of kids, we moved up here to just below grade level. And you won't see that same kind of movement everywhere, but that's the kind of, that's the kind of internal data that we look at more closely than just the end proficiencies. Uh, there's a couple other spots, let's see, this one right here, we were in the middle of that, about a year below, and we were right up there on the cusp of being at grade level with that middle group in second grade. So, there's that kind of data that we also look at, but the proficiencies are up here. On the next slide, you'll see, these are, this is the last three years. And I use the last three years because it's really since COVID. These are the three solid years that we haven't had, you know, we've, we've adjusted since then. And I put the green lines in here just to show you the trend of where we're going. So, in our kindergarten, you can see we're trending upward overall. First grade, I'm gonna come back to that one in just a minute, it's trending the wrong way. Second and third grade overall are trending upward as well. So, what this doesn't tell us is why this is happening. That's what we need to look at now in our professional learning community groups is, let's talk about first grade. What's happening here? Do we have a mismatch of resources? Do we have a mismatch of our essential targets? What is it that's causing that? So, that's the work, part of the work that we'll need to do next year. One thing I do know that I can add to the story already is that the test changes. What they're assessing in kindergarten at the beginning of first grade, it changes partly through first grade. So, that's always been a point of contention that our first grade teachers would point out to you. But it needs to change. So, we have to figure out how to deal with that better still. But for the most part, we're going the right direction. Again, like I said, next year, we have a new IRI. Uh, we just learned today that they're gonna delay the fall IRI. They will counter October instead of our August, September date. They'll counter October because they want us to have a chance to have the kids on it for a couple months before they pull our first data point for the state. So, it'll be interesting to see what happens with this. The difficulty is we won't be able to look historically now because we'll be comparing two different tests.
That's ridiculous.
So, we'll have a, we'll have a new baseline next year and then from there, we'll have to compare and see where we go. The assessment itself though, from the trainings I've been a part of, I think it's better. It gives us more actionable information, it uses artificial intelligence. So, it pulls multiple data points, uh, from the activities it has kids do, and it cuts the test time at least in half. It is, our kids will only, it'll only take them about twenty minutes, some less, but up to about twenty minutes. Right now, it's taking our kids forty-five or even longer to do the test. So, I'm excited about that and then we'll see how the data information plays out for us. Okay, the rest of this now is the ISAT data. So, we'll look at ELA first, and these are just the current proficiencies for the end of the year. So, you can see we're in the forties in our third, fourth, fifth grade, which is about where we've been in the past. These, the colors, if you remember, this is, um, above grade level, at grade level, approaching, and well below.
Okay, sorry, what are the forties? Is that the total of?
Yeah, this is the total of green and blue together.
Okay.
Yes. And then the next slide shows you six, seven, eight, and eleven. Remember, we don't take it in ninth and tenth grade. So, sixth grade's still in that forties and then we jump up into the fifties. So, we're making some progress there. And then here's the trend on that next slide, same thing, green lines here. What you're seeing is that in third, fourth, fifth grade, we're making slow gains, not huge gains. But over the last three years, you can see in sixth, seventh, eighth, and eleventh grade, much bigger trending upward. This is the year we adopted, this is the year we adopted a new curriculum for middle school, My Perspectives, and Common Lit for high school. So, that could be one of the factors. Again, this doesn't tell us why the change, it just shows us that there's a change. So, this is again, good news. This is really good news and we need to leverage what they're doing in middle school and at the high school level to see what they're doing so that we can help maybe shift these upward a little bit more too. All right, the next is math. These are again, just the, the overall proficiencies and you can see we're more in the fifties except fifth grade. That was a unique, as I was looking, fifth grade across our district this year was down a little bit. So, again, another opportunity for us to have some conversations, what happened with fifth grade this year? And then six, seven, eight. Historically, our middle school math scores and our high school have been lower. Um, so you'll see, they're, they're in the forties now except for the high school. And then the trend line shows you a little bit more of what's happening over the three years. You can, again, you can see in third, fourth, fifth, we're trending the right way, but it also, the proficiency kinda comes down a little bit. And from fifth grade, there had been this huge drop to middle school. But we're seeing that same pattern in middle school, we've got these sharp increases in proficiency ratings. And then even in high school, it's still really low, but it's trending the right way. And this is interesting because even the state has talked about the ISATs and whether or not we should be doing it in eleventh grade. Uh, and we've talked about this last year, we talked about that math data because the math test, again, remember, it covers all your math one, two, and three? And our kids are all taking math one, two, three. So, it's testing kids, some of our kids on things they haven't been taught. So, it's really, in my view, this eleventh grade ISAT is kind of a mismatch. What we've been learning about our professional learning communities is the essential targets and you assess to what you teach, but they're assessing to things we don't teach because we don't have kids in those courses because they don't need those courses for the career path they've chosen. So, but again, the work that's going on in middle school, two years ago, adopted their new curriculum as well. They're showing great increases. And they've also devoted a lot more time and resources to their math instruction. So, there's things we can glean from that as well. So, overall, our data still is not where we want it to be in terms of just looking at straight proficiency, but when you look at the trend lines, especially in these middle school years, we're doing something that's moving the needle. And we need to keep that going. So, that's all I have for you tonight. I wanted it to be short and sweet because we're just looking big picture, but if there's questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think it'd be great if we could hear later, once you've assessed what's happening in middle school, if maybe you could come back and tell us.
Yes, I have some of those ideas already, but I, yes, I would love to, maybe I can have the middle school people come help, share what they've done, so you can hear that. The other thing I would love to do at some point, um, probably in the fall, if you're open to it, I would love to come do a work session with you, a data work session. And we can just, we can get dirty with the data, just bring it all out. We could dive into different types of data, how we're using data. I think that would be a good experience for you and you can ask us lots of questions about, hey, what does this data mean? How do you use it, that kind of stuff too. So, if you're open to that, I'd love to do that sometime as well.
I personally would like it.
I would like that.
Okay. All right, well, whenever you guys wanna do that, we'll, I'll, we'll get ready. I'll bring in more people that are smarter than me to help. All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, capital plan update, uh, this is Superintendent Jason, I'm ready.
Yes, uh, Vice Chairman Grant, Chairman Nixon from Hawaii, trustees. Just a quick update for you, we met last night, um, for our June meeting. Uh, Trustee Bruce and Trustee Thornton were there, so they are, can share some details with you as well. But just wanted to kinda give you a few highlights of the things we talked about. Last night, we had our architects, LKV and Benetton, talk to our group a little bit about like the building climate in Idaho, how long it's taking to build things now. And we looked at a few of our, uh, building plans and like, what, what were the different phases for Swan Falls? And what were some of those things that we'd planned to do? And the group, excuse me, the group had made some requests for what modifications we might do to that and, and what that would do to C-count. And so, we kinda dug into that a little bit. Um, we also heard from Michael Keith from Science Bank. Uh, he had shipped some really, I think, interesting stuff with us about just kinda the climate, uh, in Idaho for passing bonds right now, and especially with school bonds. And that, uh, you know, he, he's been doing this for twenty years, he likes to say. Then in the past, you had to, as a school district, you had to be able to kinda sell the project. You had to sell the building, you had to sell the need for that. Uh, but now, we're also in a place where we have to, we also have to sell the, just the public education is important. So, there's a little bit more of a heavy lift than we've had in the past. And so, I think with all of those things included from our group, um, we really landed in a place where the reality of trying to run a bond in November is probably not a great idea that, you know, waiting till May at least, if, if that's something that we decide to do, would give us more time to tell our story, explain, um, answer questions for people and things like that. Couple other things I wanna make sure I mention. Uh, Brenda Blitman, who's actually in the audience tonight, thanks for being here, Brenda. We had met in between the two meetings and, um, she did some research and kinda just, she presented our group, uh, a plan, an idea of how we might take that previous bond, uh, one hundred and ten million bond that failed in, in two thousand and three by, really failed by a small margin. She kinda condensed that down and shared with our group some ideas and I think we got coalesced around that a little bit. But it was helpful for our group to kinda see just what it might look like to scale that back a little bit and still try to do some things for each school. So, Brenda, thank you for, thank you for doing that. And I, I'm sure we will come back to, uh, her, her ideas when we come back in August. And maybe some others as well. We did have, um, sixty-two invitations were sent out. We had twenty-two people in attendance, uh, that's including district folks and some of our experts. So, one of my main focus points going forward is gonna be trying to like, how do we get some more people involved? Because, um, sending emails, sending information, sending calendar invites doesn't seem to be quite enough. Um, so, we're gonna lean into that a little bit. Trustees, would you, is there anything you think we might should add to that update?
I don't think so, I think you covered, covered it.
Um, I just have a question, like, what's the discussion, like, what is the discussion about for a bond? Like, what, have they, has, has the group come to any kind of idea of what a bond would be for? Or what the priorities are?
I think the first few months, and I'll, I'll, I planned to say this and I skipped it, but, um, we've really been trying to answer questions about growth and about, you know, capacity of schools and how we calculate those things. And, um, looked at a couple of, you know, we toured Kuna High, um, toured Kuna Middle School a little bit last night. We've obviously been to Swan Falls. Um, so, we're just trying to like, answer questions for some folks that really were operating in a place where they needed some questions answered. Uh, so, I think our next phase is really gonna be moving into like, what is going to be on the plan? Like, let's start to really get.
Like prioritize the needs kind of?
Yep, yeah, get dirty with the numbers, right? Like Kevin said.
It's not a big enough group to really get a full consensus of what the community wants.
Well, is there something that you need from us to try to get more people there, like?
Well, that is one of the conversations that I was asking Michael is, does the board need to come up with an idea to like move the needle forward so that the group, because it's so small, understands, okay, are we saying we're only gonna bond in X amount of money or maybe like, are we only gonna bond for XYZ? So, that they understand the collective of what we're going to do versus asking them what they want? Because a couple of them are just no voters. And so, they're really struggling with understanding what it means to run a bond, even answering questions or like presenting them with an idea. And then they tear it apart because they're trying to figure out what's the bare minimum. And so, that's where my idea came of, well, maybe instead of, like, the concern of like, maybe we just needed to say, what is the bare minimum and present that and then have a conversation around what does this look like? Do you like, do you like this or what would you like to see versus instead of just having it be a blank state?
I mean, I kinda like that idea of like, we could meet and talk with people that, about it and then present a little, like, maybe some questions, like, you know, what's your pri? We feel like these are some of the priorities, come and tell us what you think about these things, you know? Um, maybe it would drum up some more interest if people were new, like, when you hear capital planning, I think it's a bit, like, people are like, yeah, I don't know what that is, you know? But if you're like, new building or like creating space or like, maybe if we renamed it a bit to market it, I don't know.
Or if it's like, we're only bonding for XYZ, well, then, then the community knows, oh, well, this is what they're bonding for. And then it creates a conversation of, well, I don't like this or I don't, maybe we do this. So, sometimes when you just put, push the needle forward with an idea, then it produces conversations and allows other community members to come in and give ideas. And, and then they have an idea of what we're doing. And so, then it creates more of a conversation. And sometimes it brings more people in versus trying to get people to come to produce the idea. Because they're not really grasped, like, they're not really coming for that.
And we haven't, I don't think we've pushed them hard to do that yet. I think we've really been in a, we've been in a place where it's like, okay, you say your physical capacity of your building is this, other people say it's this, how do we do the math of this? Trying to answer some of those like.
So that they feel like it's a real issue.
Yeah, and you know, I think, I think we've been in a place, we even saw this with the supplemental levy a little bit. For whatever reason, restoring a little bit of trust, building that transparency with the community, um, has been kind of a, and I think we do that best when we answer questions openly, honestly, transparently. Um, and we've needed to do some of that. So, I think that's been one of our focuses as well. But I liked your ideas of maybe rebranding the name of the committee. You're right, like, we did hear that from some folks.
Capital plan, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Like, if you didn't tell me what you were talking about at the meeting, I probably wouldn't guess it was about new buildings or bonds.
Yeah.
Well, but I have been posting on the Facebook group too to like, try to create the conversation, but that, I, I don't know.
I know Brenda helped us market too on Facebook a little bit to try to get some more. Um, we, our plan is to not meet in July, it's a tough month for people. We're gonna reconvene in August. And I have some, some work to do between now and then too, so. Michael Keith shared some ideas about potentially, there's some, um, firms out there that we could work with that will help us do some voter analysis and just try to get a general climate survey of our community um, around the idea of bonds, around the idea of our school district. And what do they remember from the two thousand and three bond? Why didn't that pass? Maybe, you know, do you, why don't you vote? If you don't, why do you if you do, those kinds of things. Um, so, we're gonna explore that with him a little bit and see what that might look like. So, there's a, we're still moving on stuff even though we're not meeting.
And I wonder if maybe some of those people, those districts that ran bonds and they didn't pass, you know, like Middleton or something, might have some insight if we talked to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I, I mean, I heard about quite a bit of money spent trying to pass a bond in Middleton and felt just a bit short there. But, anyway, I, I wonder if they might have some good insight, but, yeah.
I was hoping that there was some potential would be at the meeting this morning, but he wasn't there. So, I was gonna ask a little bit about.
We've heard, I've heard a little bit about, maybe there was, I think, maybe a ground swell of some things right before the day of, or a short time before the day of the election, it created some confusion for voters. And so, I think we can anticipate some of those things by trying to answer questions and anticipating those things as they might come up too. But yeah, I agree, we can, we can poke into that some more too. But yeah, I agree, we can poke into that some more too.
It's a different group, but I'm thankful for them because there was a group that was already, you know, hey, let's pass a bond. But then there's this other group like, no, we need to know more. And I like that group. I like that group because they're asking some really good questions and they want to dig deeper, but they're still coming. They, they continue to come. So that's a good thing for us because they ask good questions.
They make us better.
And they make us better.
Genuinely make us better.
Yeah. They're great. And so...
For sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any delegates signed up, Allison?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on to unfinished business, Superintendent Brian, who's the greatest?
Trustees, I'm back real fast, just so you guys, there wasn't an action to this last time when, remember you guys approved for us to do the blacktop and the part not reseal? But you had questions about the alternatives? So this would allow us to go and do the work for the one or both of the alternatives that you guys wanted to do.
Tell me what the KMS event parking is.
That was that, that.
Oh, refinishing that?
Correct.
I mean, it would be a total redo at this point, right?
It would be a total redo. And I, I didn't want to be presumptuous and not put that on there in case you guys did want to discuss it, so we just put action and let you guys discuss which ones you wanted us to go find out, what the bids were and then say yay or nay.
I mean, I would say that B is a higher priority than A in my opinion, but might as well get a bid for them.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Go further on both of them, just to kind of see what we can pick.
I mean, I do agree B is a concern over A, just because they are driving to school, but it doesn't hurt to understand prices and what it costs for those.
Those students parking along the road, I just don't like seeing it. So anything we can do to try to alleviate that problem? I'll make a motion that we get bids for asphalt alternatives for KMS event parking and KHS student parking on addition.
Now a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to the next one. Save Schools. Go ahead, take it away.
Two separate projects. We have two elementaries that we still have not been able to finish the perimeter fencing, both Hubbard and Silver Trail. So Hubbard, there are two bids, this may sound a little strange, but actually, our preferred bid is the Meridian fence bid. It's a little more than $1,400 more. The reason why, and I have backup, for those of you that haven't ever met Johnny, our maintenance supervisor is, this is a very late night for him because maintenance supervisor gets here really early and gets to do all this stuff early in the morning. His request, my request is that Meridian fence, you'll see in a second here, was by far the lowest bid for Silver Trail. There's a small rot, it's not rot iron fencing, it's rot, that's W, but anyways, you learn new things every day. But if you look in front of Hubbard, there's that rot iron fencing. When we add the ERR classrooms and the classrooms to the annex, you could actually leave and go right to the playground and they would like that, just to be a small little hallway. So Meridian fence, that, that project was much less than $10,000. So they'll do that for us, they're doing Silver Trail for us. And I don't want to speak for you, but I know Johnny would much rather just deal with, fencing's a different animal and he would like to deal with one company for all three. So our preferred bid, and you can ask him any questions you'd like, especially why it's rot instead of rot.
I mean, I just am wondering, is there any reason why you can't ask Meridian fence to match the fence price? Like that's what I would do if I was doing it at my house.
Is it because they're adding in the extra rot iron?
That's a different, that's a different. This is just the perimeter fence and it goes all the way from the neighborhood down the side and there'll be two, because there's that fire lane for, I mean, that's what that road is for, is in case there were a fire, we have to do two rolling gates at both.
So it's an apples to apples bid?
Correct.
So, so is there a reason why you can't ask them to, to beat that, to meet that price?
That's very possible and I can do that, absolutely.
It seems like they might want all the work, so. And it's not that much money to, if it's not that much money to us, it's not that much money to them either. So I think it'd be nice if we could save the money and still go with Meridian fence.
Are we breaking any rules though by doing that? Because we're almost telling Meridian fence what the...
It wasn't a sealed bid.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go with Meridian fence for the, all of the projects, Hubbard and Silver Trail and the little addition. And provided that Meridian fence will do the project for $18,383.63, like we will.
So question, if they say no and we take an action, can we still stay with Meridian fence or does it have to be brought back for another action? Because I don't want to extend the project to another month. So...
Especially with the Fourth of July.
Correct.
So I could amend my, because I'm okay going with Meridian fence regardless if they match it or not. Hopefully they're not listening.
Well, you're going to have to make a motion to keep, I mean, we have to keep it anyway so that they can move forward, so.
We have a second.
What, are you going to, you have to amend your motion?
I don't, I'm still not going to.
Well, I don't really know if it's worth amending them, if, if we're going with them anyway and it's in the minutes and they can easily see that that's the case, then we might as well just go with Meridian fence.
And you can always ask before you say yes.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Russ, heard me.
I don't know what the, what's the motion that we're going with?
You made it.
Yeah, but I'm just saying like, so we're not going to move forward with Meridian fence if it, if they don't beat the price? Because that's the motion I made.
No, we are still going to.
But that's not the motion I made.
I thought that was a motion.
So I could, I could make a new motion if that's what we...
That's what I just asked, to amend the motion so that they can move forward regardless what, if they say yes or no.
So we're moving on Kirsty's amendment?
Okay.
So we need a second for Kirsty's motion?
Yeah, but you amend again.
Okay. We have amended motion on the table, do we have a second?
One of you has a second because apparently it's my motion, so. Okay.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Okay. The second slide shows you that Meridian fence, it was almost $5,000 difference between Superior Fence and Rayo. Silver Trail is just on the two sides. If I say side, you're right. And there'll be, it'll be a rolling gate and that'll also close down and there'll be a perimeter fence for them as well.
So there's some stress for Silver Trail?
Correct.
Okay. So we need another motion passed?
Yeah, well, let me sit, try and get this line.
I'll make a motion that we accept Meridian fence on the Silver Trail fence project for $14,177.45. I second.
All in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Moving on to new business, organization strengths, like at the 25, 26 school year negotiation agreement.
So that's just me, I know there's all those people, but they bailed on me. Kevin said he would, but you know.
I'm here, but I already facilitated, so she gets to present.
I'm Melissa Nelson, I'm the current KEN president. This is our proposed negotiated agreement. Just to review, we are on an interest-based bargaining system, so we begin our negotiations or collaborations at the very beginning of the school year. We will get how things kind of went last year and what kinds of things we need to continue to work forward to. Our official negotiations start in April and then you can see the other dates that we had.
I don't know who to look at.
Who's moving? Okay, so we presented the membership with this, with the slideshow and answered questions and opened the voting on Wednesday, May 21st. The insurance came with another bid, so we reopened negotiations. We made no changes, so we went ahead with the gratification approval process for Wednesday, May 28th. And here we are tonight to present to you. The insurance costs across the state have gone up. The legislation was aware of that and provided some extra monies based on our FTE account, accounts for insurance rates, but it wasn't never what we needed. But we have agreed to a 16% increase for regions, which will be covered by the district for employees, but anyone with dependence on their plan will, will fill the 16% increase. Willamette Dental was an increase of 6.8% to be covered by the district for employees, but again, that dependence will have to be covered on the employee's tab. Delta Dental will increase 2%, but our VSP vision plan has been increased.
I just have a question, why do dental insurance?
Willamette Dental is kind of a, I don't even, like it's kind of where you go to, like primary health, you can only go to primary health, you only see, you don't necessarily see the same dentist every time you go, you just, it's kind of a, I mean, yeah, I can probably explain it better because I...
I can answer all that.
Oh, yes!
No, so, I mean, I probably shouldn't have spoke up, because I'm not a fan, but...
Right, but it's an option for, they have some of their out-of-pocket maxes and their, from what I hear from the people in the district, that employees that do use it, they have it pretty good.
Orthodontics?
Yeah, the orthodontic.
Orthodontics, 100%, so it's hard, it's hard for a lot of families not to take it.
Yes.
So, so are employees double covered?
No, you have to choose.
You have to choose.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I get it.
Yeah.
But Willamette Dental is an insurance company that owns the dental office and so everyone there is an employee of the insurance company.
So is that kind of like?
So you, you can only go...
A conglomerate? Yeah.
Yeah, they only have like two offices.
Oh, okay.
They're, when we were discussing the bids, they're just about to give themselves out of employee reach, basically. They continually increased every year and they're, with this 6.8% increase, they, the 100% orthodontic is pretty much the only thing keeping people there. Other items we negotiated, we were able to negotiate an increase, college credits are going up. I'll talk more about why it's important that our teachers have masters and advanced degrees. So we are doubling the credit reimbursement for, from $150 a credit to $300 a credit for up to six credits per year on advanced degrees of you're getting a master's degree or a master's certification or PhD if you're so declined. We added JROTC to our activities stipend list. Currently, they were not being paid to do all their services. There are three open houses that are mandated, can I say mandated? Mandated by the school board and the school district for certified staff to be at the kindergarten open house, sixth grade open house, the ninth grade open house. In the past, they've been compensated by maybe being allowed to leave early one day, which teachers just don't do. So this gives them $100 stipend for their hours after contract hours on that night.
And then they are required to be at these events?
Yeah, so this is like if a kindergarten teacher did not show up to go to the, or did not show up to meet incoming kindergarten students.
And they don't get that $100?
Yeah, they won't get the $100. We found that our early literacy, early literacy specialist that we have this year was not able to, was not as helpful as having her as an instructional coach. So using Title I, negotiating to use Title I funds to extend her into an instructional coach position, or it's not necessarily her, but that position into early, from early literacy specialist to instructional coach, which is, I think you can see with the data from the IRI. And I totally agree with, with Kevin in the apples to apples of the first grade, they're, at the beginning of the school year, they're assessed for letter names and sounds, but by the middle of the school year, they're being assessed on whether or not they have fluent reading skills. And so obviously it's hard to like take a test and say at the beginning of the school year, they knew their letter names and sounds, but they haven't been able to put it together to read, but that's what that data is showing. So I think, I know the state department of education is putting quite a bit of money into their early literacy program, but I think having that instructional coach be able to work side by side with teachers, especially with this new IRI being rolled out via MIRA, that'll be helpful. We negotiated to return early release Wednesdays to the middle school. They have really felt the missed opportunity of collaboration, of being able to meet with their team, to look at data, to collaborate that way. So adding that, one of the ways we were able to do that is the state changed their transportation formula just enough that we can pay for that Wednesday transportation.
Have wacky Wednesdays again?
Wacky Wednesday, well, elementary is always how wacky has continued now. It'll just be into the middle school, which from what we heard from our middle school teachers, they were all, there hasn't been one negative comment about it. Just trying to stay competitive with our subpay, we've increased it from $95 to $110 during the week and $130 on Mondays and Fridays from $125. This is directly from your policy pages, this is the staff protection that is missing in our master contract. So we wanted to make sure that we had some protection language for our staff. And so we literally are cutting and pasting this into our master contract document. All right, here comes the bag. Try and keep it brief. So the state legislation has mandated that we increase the salary schedule based off the career ladder to, I'm just really tired today, I don't even know why. Let me back up. So our funding is based on how many teachers we have, where the teachers are placed on the career ladder. So based on how many years of experience they have and how many, and their degree. The state only funds for bachelors and masters and they only fund based on residency, professional and advanced professional certification. Residency is your first three years of teaching and then if you have met requirements, you move to the professional run after five years, thank you Kevin. After five years, then you have the ability to move to advanced professional. If our teachers are advanced professional, we receive more compensation for them from the state as opposed to if they're just professionals. So we want our teachers to be advanced professionals so that we are receiving more funding. However, the state has changed the minimum for what it was. So this was $43,000, is that correct?
Yeah, they're requiring us to add the 63.59. Remember when they said that every teacher got that raise, but they didn't codify it? This year, they told us that even though it's not codified, we have to add that 63.59 to our minimum. We knew they were going to have to do these minimums, but we didn't know we had to do what wasn't codified. What's scary is that they take that money back because it's not in Idaho code. It's already in our pay scale. And so like every district in the state of Idaho is now pay scales and we can't go backwards unless we call for numbers and see, so we just got to trust our legislators.
Based on, and so they, the legislation mandated that they put that $6,300 in as well as, and after that had been put in, a 5% increase on top of that. So they'll be funding us this year with that $6,300 and a 5% increase based on our FTEs, which we know that we're at least 100 over, FTEs 150 now? FTEs over?
Depends on what category, so, you know, certified, classified, so-
The certified?
Yeah.
So what it did is, all of our really hard work that I've been standing up here for the last four years, talking about fixing our salary schedule, getting rid of all of our furlough years and all of those things, kind of went away. But because we had fixed it, it was less of a headache to change this, but what it did is, some people will be really happy with the raises they're getting, and other people are getting a 2% raise. So across the board, for both certified and classified, there is a minimum of 2% with a possibility of more. So hopefully, we can balance things out next year with different funding, hopefully the state will figure it out. So, this is what our new salary schedule looked like.
And is this part of the budget that we already received, right?
Yep, because I knew all this when we did it in May.
Yeah, right. Go ahead and skip that one. Okay, so this is our new salary schedule. So, there are, it's so complicated now, because we decided to make things more complicated. The legislation is saying that if you are, if you are a professionally endorsed teacher, then this is now your minimum. You can be a professionally endorsed teacher any time from year three forward. So, year eight, we were, is now that will be the minimum. So if you do not move from professional to advanced professional in year eight, then you will continue to get that minimum professional. So that's what those two different amounts are. So this is if I stayed professional in my career, I didn't move to advanced professional, this would be my salary, continuing from year to year.
Is, do you move based on your education?
No, I'll show you what you have to do in order to. And so if I did, though, if at year eight I was able to meet the requirements for advanced professional, then this would be my new salary.
Oh, the 64?
Yeah. So that's kind of where, we had to figure out where the minimums ended, and where, because we can't pay our employees less than we did before, so some people, this is where that 2% increase comes in, they were above the minimum, but there was only enough to do that.
So you just add in 2% to what they were?
Just 2% there, yeah. So anything that is only 1 was higher than the minimum, but it still be increased as 2%. Okay, next slide. Okay, go, I don't think you have my slides. Go back one more slide from Dahlia. So, these are the, in order to be a professional teacher, from your residency to professional, you need to have taught with a certification for three years, you need to meet the professional run compensation, which is that you are, two of the three previous years, or the third year, you are proficient or higher in your Part II evaluation. You didn't demonstrate 50% plus 1% of students have met their measurable student achievement target, which currently, the legislature demands that kindergarten first, second, and third, it has to be based on the IRI, which is frustrating for teachers, when you, especially with that apples-to-oranges testing, and then you have to have a written recommendation. So, it's difficult to become a professional, but not overly difficult. If you're a good teacher, you should hopefully be professional. However, to be advanced professional, you have to have taught for, sorry, you have to have your eight years of reasonable certification, you have to meet the advanced professional compensation run, which means that you have to have, of the last four of the five previous years, you have to have no unsatisfactory or basics, have the professional endorsement, and then be distinguished in domains four, two-
Two, or three.
Or three. You have to be distinguished in four of domains two or three.
A majority, so three, three out of five.
Three out of five. You have to have completed your individualized professional learning plan, which is basically the 50% plus 1, and then you have to have held a leadership role during three of the previous years, which for some of our teachers is something we'll need to look into changing so that we have more opportunities for leadership. Some of the teachers, that's the only piece that they're missing, but not everybody can be the team leader, so.
Do you know what the percentages are in our district of how many are professional and advanced professional?
Yes, yes, we do.
We do.
I don't, but, right.
Yeah, I mean, I can get you those numbers right after, yeah.
I would be interested to know, like, percentages.
And then if we were true, and I don't mean to take over, if we were true career ladder, you can see, the mandatory is only at RP and AP, but there's like R1, R2, R3, and we get different funding in each one of those. If a district is truly career ladder, then you would, those are the monies that you would see at each level. We can't, there's no way we could afford, we could have afforded to do the minimums and then do the raises like those. Ideally, someday maybe we can get there, some districts are trying, I know, I know even, and I hate saying this, but even Boise said there's, they can't do, to complete the career ladder because they can't afford it. I'm not as far as that. But yeah, I can give you exact numbers.
Brian went through every single person, so he has all of that on his spreadsheet.
Multiple times.
Multiple times.
And we are finding, as we're doing that, we're finding that there are some errors, some teachers, either they've moved from another district to our district, and their certification years were not correctly listed, they came from out of state, so we're doing our very best to kind of clean that up. We're working with the employees directly to make sure they know how to look at their certification, how to find their evaluations from the previous years, and make sure that they're moving forward on a good track for the year. So, okay. Things that we will work on next year, we still need to go through and make, not adjustments, but justifications for our extended days organizational charts. So this is an example of our $100 that we just added for our kindergarten, and for the open houses, is that why are people in our district receiving stipends, how much are the stipend that they're receiving, and if they're receiving extra days, what that looks like, how are they accountable for it, why they're getting extra days, that sort of thing. Looking at helping our SED teachers, they're quite overworked, we need to figure out a way to lower our family premiums, as we've just raised them 16%. We need to find ways to make our employees' dependents' health insurance more affordable. We still need to work on our class size recommendations and caps, and we are wanting to work on getting our staff classified reimbursement. That was the other part that was missing from this slide. So, the classified schedule, we also were able to add, we negotiated to add a different step, I guess, is that what you guys call it? So there was, for the classified PERS, there's different classifications based on where they have certification or endorsement, and for some staff, the PERS, they were bumping up against a barrier of a bachelor's degree. They're able to get, like our PERS, with our behavior PERS, they're able to get different certifications, but they were not getting more money because of those certifications. So we created a line that allows them to go ahead and get those certifications that other districts are paying for, so that we can keep those people in our district, because they're highly qualified. And that's, okay. So if you approve of this, then we will send contracts out June 16th, and they'll be due until the first. Any questions?
Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this contract negotiation and timeline. Is that a good motion?
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Kirsty?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on.
Can I just say something about that? Because the KEA, they did, it was a great collaboration, a time of collaboration, and we had, we were going to get to some of those other things, and then, I mean, at the last minute, we got hit with that career ladder thing, and like, you were there, and we got hit with that, and it was all of a sudden, it was like, we had no choice but to do that minimum and put everything else on hold, and it was great, because we all came to the same realization, there's nothing more we can do right now, because we have to do-
Talk about your cell phone that day, they're burning.
Oh my, yeah, my cell phone was just blowing up, because we just got that word from the state, and everybody was like, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do? But our KEA was just so good about like acknowledging and realizing, like, there's nothing more we can do right now, but do this. I really do appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. CFO Stedman, you want to talk to us about the 24 contract budget?
Yeah, so I, just briefly, I also want to second what Kim just said, because I was part of the collaboration negotiation, and I was very impressed, Melissa and Kevin did an awesome job, I really appreciate it. So, the purpose of today's presentation is to approve the revised fiscal 25 budget, which is ending this month, and also approve the proposed budget, fiscal 26, for next year. Now fiscal 25, because you had, we had some big revenue item come in, the modernization fund, 25 million, it, when it comes in throughout the school year, I update our systems as a revised budget, and it still needs to be approved by you. And then the proposed budget is the main purpose of this, and when we talked in May, there hasn't been changes, but what we were waiting on was the health insurance, to see if it was going to come down, it didn't. It's remained the same, but with all the collaboration that we did, and the great communication, all the things that she just mentioned that we negotiated on, those were all put into the budget, so everything was set to go. This slide is what I shared with you in May, it's the same, the same assumptions in terms of expenses and revenues going up, so the revenue, because the legislator's approved, increased funds for salary benefits, health insurance discretionary staying the same, didn't increase, and then the expenses, which she just covered, which primarily was over a million dollars of hitting those minimums, that expense increased, which, we will, we will get some increased funding for that, but it won't cover it all. And then also, the health insurance was the other, maybe one of 16%. The revenue going up, also because of the supplemental levy plays a big part of that in addition. And then, I'm going to get into the units now, because I had mentioned in May, where this year, we had went up from what was originally projected a year ago, from 264 to 277, which helped us out this year. And, and I also want to explain why we're also projecting about 277 units for next year as well, and so I want to explain to you, how does the state come up with these units? How do they calculate them? And it's important, because the units is what the general fund revenue comes from in the big four categories. So, you've got your health insurance discretionary, and then you have your salary and benefits, and those four are all the revenue for the general fund, and it's all based on the number of units. So, let me just show you real quick where the units come from. So this, from this law, this code, this sheet applies to all the school districts in Idaho, so it looks super confusing with all these numbers and things, but I'll just do a brief like explanation. So they break it up into different types of education, so you've got your elementary, your kindergarten, your secondary, exceptional, alternative, and then they assign devisers based on, different devisers based on those categories, and then over here, on the left part, is your enrollment and the attendance of that enrollment. So if I just do a simple example for you, we'll go to elementary, and let's just say we have exactly 300 kids in that particular school, or 300 across the schools' attendance of that enrollment, let's say for grades one, two, and three, your divisor would be 20, and you'd get 15 units for that group of kids. This is the minimum that you would get, so you'd get at least 15. So let's say your average day attendance is 400, you'd still use the same divisor, and you'd get 20 units, so 400 divided by 20, you get 20 units. And so what you do is you add up all of these units, and that's the total units that you would have in the school district. Now, just to give you an example, what you then do with the units and come up with the funding, so with health insurance, for example, they allotted our school district $20,000 per unit. So if we had 277 units, you times it by 20 grand, and that's how much you get for health insurance. This next year, they upped it a little bit to 21,000, so you times it by that, and that's how you get the new health insurance. Now, there's two different types of units, though, so I don't want to get too boring, but want to explain it. So there's the, what's called the midterm units, and then there's another one called the best 28-week units. So whenever you hear the word midterm, that means your first 10 weeks of school, so are the first 49 days of the school year. And three of the, four of those funding items are based on that midterm, so those first couple of months are extremely important attendance, because the more attendance you get, obviously, better education, but you have more state revenue, meaning you need less local tax revenue, so it's better for the wallet, too, so it's very important that we push those first 10 weeks. And then the other one, which is discretionary funding, is actually based on best 28 weeks. So the state looks at 28 weeks towards the end of this year, and it may be above or below that first 10 weeks, and they adjust discretionary funding based on that. And so hopefully, we haven't dropped a whole lot on that, so it hurt our discretionary funding. But the other three, health insurance, salary and benefits, that's based on the first 10 weeks of units. So, now let me just show you an example, this is the official one for the CUNY School District that you receive every year in December. This is the midterm report, so not the best 28 weeks, but the midterm, but this is the most important one of all, where most of our funding comes from. You can see, this is 49 days that they looked at, across our various elementary, secondary, and using the devisers as it showed on the previous screen, and then you get the units. And what you do is you add up the units. So, this second sheet shows the other schools that weren't on the previous sheet, and even exceptional, and they all come up with the various units, and they totaled up for us 278. And then you may say, well, why did we not actually get funding based on 278? Well, there's one other little item here that you may not be that interested in, but it still happens, it's the protection. So, when you went, when we went from COVID, based purely on enrollment, to now average day attendance, a lot of school districts saw a decrease in funding because of that, some more than 3%, so they instituted protection, but you, we also still need protection because of a change that could happen with a school district. So, school districts around Idaho may have lost some enrollment, or had their attendance get worse, and so what happens in school districts like us, where that didn't happen, is we're subsidizing them, and they take a little piece based on the size of your school district out. So they took almost a unit from us away, so that's why we were at 277. In prior years, I looked, they actually took more units out from us in prior years, so it's actually stabilizing this insurance program, we don't have to subsidize much. But let's say we have a problem, so I'm budgeting 277 again, but let's say we have a problem with our attendance, our enrollment, and we were to drop more than 3% below, this would help us, because other school districts would then subsidize us, so the most we could ever go down in units from our budget would be 3%, which would be in the high 260s. So we're guaranteed to get funding in all those categories, or general fund, of at least the high 260s unit. So that's comforting to know that we're going to be protected, and the reason they do that is so that school districts can transition. But what that also means, though, is we're kind of guessing this number, right? It's not a big number of units, but let's just say a lot of school districts do have problems in Idaho, people move out, or school choice or whatnot. This could get bigger next year and hurt us a little bit, so if it's more than a unit, then that starts, that starts to add up, and that hurts us with funding. But that's basically how that insurance program works. And how we came up with 277, there's another state spreadsheet that allows me to go in and put in what Brian's projecting on enrollment, now that could change every now and then in the school year, but we do our best guess, and then I also put in the attendance. And so I've put in the 92% attendance, which is what we had this year, most of our schools did better in 92, but there was a few below, and that's what we averaged. But if there's a big change in that, yes, we could get less units, or we could get more units, and the important thing to remember is if your funding's based on the units, that if we all of a sudden have a lot more attendance and enrollment, then we will, if we need to staff up to it- then we will, if we need to staff up to it, we're getting more revenue, we can spend more. Or the reverse. So if it drops way down and we know it's real and it's going to stay way down, well, then we got to start cutting expenses and make adjustments to staffing. So either way, you can move. So that's why we're coming up with the 277. So it was a great question in May from Hillary on that. So I wanted to explain how all that works. And then again, in the appendix, in your specific detailed budget document, you can go and see that salary based portionment. You can see how they take those units and how they come up with the amount of FTEs that they have for classified, certified, Melissa was talking about. And we, they only allot so many in admin and we have more than that. And they only allot so much average salary. In a lot of cases, we have more than that. And so that's, that just shows you how they fund. So any questions on the units?
Super helpful, I feel like.
Okay.
I do have one question. A lot of times I hear about the fifth day of school attendance. And I guess I didn't hear anything about that specifically in this. So what's the fifth day?
Didn't somebody just mention that there?
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday in Capitol. So what was that again?
It's kind of like just that, that report. We send that report to the State Department, right? I mean, they, 50 day attendance is something we report, so it's like.
It's just a reported.
Kind of like a baseline to establish for everybody.
Oh, okay. But what really matters is over actually a really much larger time for funding. Okay.
Yep. Okay, so then that takes us to the revenue and expense slides that are the same that you saw in May. And the important thing to remember here is the increase because of supplemental levy, the increase in state revenue, which gives us five and a half million increase over the prior year. And then when we look at the expenses, fortunately, the increase isn't as much as the five and a half million, and that's good so that we don't dip in next year into the fund balance as much as we had to this, as we planned this past year. But the expense increase, which we've already mentioned several times, is the increase in the minimum salaries, the insurance, cost of living, inflation for various things. And then that gives us to our general fund balance, which had been nice and healthy the last couple of years according to the financial statements, out of the financial statements. And then what we're projecting this year, which again, I think there's a greater chance once all the health insurance stuff is done, even just this year, that this will be less and this balance will be better than 15. I just wanted to make sure that we're okay there, which will then translate to a better balance next year. And the general fund revenue and expense really, really balancing, with the exception of the transfer that we are projecting to make both years for the increase in special education fund and costs. But the idea here is, you know, to not have too big of a balance. Or before these years, it was too low. We want to get into that good, comfortable range. And the reason why you want to have that is because of what I just explained on the units. There's variables we don't know about that could happen, the attendance, enrollment, or just that thing protecting other school districts. And you, there's also a timing issue sometimes where you have to spend money and then the revenue that you plan to match that expense comes in a little bit later. So the fund balance gets you through those months until that revenue catches back up with what you planned. And that's why it's important to have that and be consistent with that fund balance.
And an ending fund balance percentage that you, that is recommended is about?
So, so you, your policy, I believe, is nine, nine, 10%. So, but we also have to remember that, you know, with timing and emergencies, that you can go through that pretty quick. And so that's, we want to get into that low teen range and then try to stabilize and match revenues and expenses. And thankful for the supplemental levy because without that, to be able to do that, we would have not been able to get those FTEs and let go of other FTEs. So that really helped out. So we, the school district, propose or recommend that you approve the revised fiscal '25 budget and also the proposed fiscal '26 budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the fiscal year '25 revised budget and fiscal year '26 proposed budget as was presented.
All in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael, aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Brian. He does a nice job and us even just walking through it with him and understanding that very complicated budget sheet. He does a nice job of that.
We're very grateful that he's here.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent Graves, you want to talk to us about all these wonderful policies?
I would like to nominate Brad to be the first. We have eight policies before you for first read with amendments. So aye stand for any questions you guys on those eight first read amendments.
I will make a motion that we approve. What do I have to say? Do I have to say all these numbers? Yes.
You do because if something changes in the future, then you have to have the names and titles.
So I need to say amend? Approve to amend?
Yep.
Policy 300, 516, 542, 568, 679, 900, 910, and 1,000.
Second. All in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
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 Kim?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And we have four new policies to be met for first reading for adoption.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the following policies for the first read, 774, 846, 942.1, and 943. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
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 Kim?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Do you want to?
Second reads, yeah. These three policies have kind of been stuck in second read for a while.
I have something to say about 402.
Perfect, so that's the first one with amend for a second read.
So I know it says word for word on the Idaho code, but in my opinion, and from what I understand, we need to follow the code, but we can be more strict than the code. And so I would like to see them not have contact with students until they have, not five days, but not five days after, but before they have contact with students. And I guess in support of that, I think we've seen quite a, I mean, I don't know if these, the situations across the state would have been alleviated by this policy, but we do see an increase, we have seen an increase, in my opinion, just from watching the news, no hard data, of issues with. And so I'd like to see CUNA have some solid ground in the way that we treat, you know, who's with our kids unsupervised. And I think they should pass a background check before they're with them. That would be my proposal.
Don't make a motion.
Yes, then would you change the days to the?
Zero.
Zero, okay. So I have made this motion previously and I think it's come back the same way. So, and I know that's because it says that's what the code is. And so I guess I would like to see us be better than the code. And so if that's possible, I will make a motion that we don't, we need zero days contact until they pass a background check. That would be my motion. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Kim?
Aye.
We will hold that one and it'll bring back it for second read again with that changed.
Thank you.
Then the two for second read again for adoption.
And I would like to make a motion that we adopt the following policies, 681.1 and 1013.
For the second read?
For a second range. I'll second.
All in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
Aye, Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, thank you. The consent agenda. I think we need to amend because we adjusted the superintendent's contract for '25, '26.
Where is that at?
I thought it was supposed to be.
Personnel report. So it's in the personnel report. So we need to amend, we need to pull it from the consent and then make a motion to amend the personnel report.
Okay, so I am going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus the number seven, the personnel report.
Second.
All in favor, Hillary?
Aye.
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 Kim?
Aye.
Okay. Now we need to make a motion to approve the superintendent's contract for '25, '26.
To amend personnel report.
To, okay.
And so what do we do then?
I'll make a motion that we amend the personnel report to approve Superintendent Kim Beckindall for the '25, '26 school year. Do we state salary? For $149,000 for next year. Appreciate you, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Kim?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving right along.
Good of the order.
So adopt the following policy, 205.
I don't know, we're at the good of the order. I think that was part of the. That's part of the consent. It kind of looks like it's not, but it's part of the consent.
Yeah, it's part of the consent.
Oh, yeah.
It has an, yeah, and it has an action item on that.
That we need to do that separately? It does.
Yeah, sorry, I missed taking off the action. That's part of the consent.
Okay, okay. Okay, good of the order, June 2 is August. It's usually the first weekend in August. And then also just want to thank the, I think the football program for helping move all the stuff at Hubbard, right? Is that what it was?
Yeah, Johnny was very thankful too.
Everyone, thank you. They moved stuff out of the annex or something?
I think teachers moved all over at Hubbard, so because the annex is now.
Teachers' classrooms.
They're young, they can handle it and those file cabinets a lot better than those old people.
And I think, I think some of them helped put away the older nasty pool pit too. It was wet and I think they all got wet pushing, putting it up on the second floor. I've been doing that for 10 years, that is a nasty job.
So you're glad to have the football players do it?
Usually it's like me and my kids and a few people that I can scrounge up and help me.
It used to be me and my kids, all right, clunk, it gets bigger.
And take my ice cream. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.